We will call to order the special meeting of the Folsom City Council for Monday, December 12th, 2022. The clerk will call the roll, please.
Council members Aquino.
Here.
Chalam Charla.
Here.
Kozlowski.
Here.
Rodriguez.
Here.
Howell.
Yes.
And Councilmember-elect Roarbaugh is seated in the audience.
Okay, if you'll join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I just to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will move on to the consent calendar. The clerk would read that item, please.
Your one item on the consent calendar this evening is Resolution Number 10965. This is a resolution reciting the fact of the general municipal election held on November 8th and declaring the result.
I'll move adoption of the consent calendar.
I'll second.
We have motion and second. Call the roll, please.
Councilmembers Aquino.
Yes.
Chalam Charla.
Yes.
Kozlowski.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
And Howell.
Yes.
Your next item this evening is scheduled presentation. This is a resolution commendation honoring Carrie Howell for her outstanding service to the city of Folsom.
Good evening, everyone. I love when you guys clapped so big. Just give one more time. Big round of applause to our great friend Carrie Howell. We four are going to together present her the proclamation for her extraordinary service for our city of Folsom. So I'm going to take a first cut and all our colleagues are going to go on at a time. Whereas Carrie Howell began her long journey and legacy of service on behalf of the Folsom residents of the city of Folsom upon her appointment to the Planning Commission in 1994. 1994. Now, give one more round of applause, please. 1994. That's awesome. She has been dedicated for our community. She was then first elected to the city of Folsom City Council in 1998. And whereas during her tenure on the city council, Carrie Howell served four terms as a mayor, city of Folsom mayor, and three terms as a vice mayor. Please give her one more round of applause on the mayor and vice mayor. Whereas when Carrie Howell was sworn in for her first term as a council member, I don't think so. You guys have this piece of paper. Anybody can guess how many? What is the population? Forty-five thousand people. While today is reached to eighty thousand people, it's an honor for me to read this proclamation to Mayor Carrie Howell.
Whereas Carrie Howell was instrumental in developing and implementing the strategic vision, attention to thoughtful and well-planned growth, and prudent planning that led to Folsom becoming one of the most desirable cities in the United States to live, work, and play, and own a business, I'm gonna add. Whereas Carrie Howell was part of a core leadership strategy team that led to the Folsom's successful annexation of its sphere of influence south of Highway 50, as well as designed land use, infrastructure development, and financing plan that forged the path for the development of an area that new Folsom residents now happily and proudly call home. And whereas Carrie Howell served on the city council through particularly challenging economic times and helped make the very hard decisions that balanced Folsom's solid fiscal position with the continued high quality of life for our residents.
And Carrie Howell prioritized travel to Washington, D.C. on behalf of the city despite the many other demands on her time, participating in and leading regional delegations to our nation's capital to advocate for Folsom's projects and programs. And Carrie Howell is an engineer by education, training, disposition, and trade. And her engineering and analytical skills were tremendous assets, will continue to be tremendous assets to the city council over her many years of service and into the future. And Carrie Howell has run two small businesses, successful, in Folsom, and was always a passionate supporter of and advocate for the greater Folsom partnership and Folsom's business community.
And whereas Carrie Howell did not limit her service to the city council, but deployed her skills and acumen to leadership roles on behalf of major regional commissions, including the Capital Southeast Connector Joint Powers Authority, the Sacramento Regional Transit District, the Regional Water Authority, the Retirement Board of Authority, the Sacramento Placerville Transportation Corridor Joint Powers Authority, and the Sacramento Regional County Sanitation District, among many others. And whereas Carrie Howell could always be counted on for reminders to drivers to be safe on our city's streets, a thorough understanding of the complexities of the city's rich history and its issues, and a willingness to share that important context, a rye sense of humor, and we are grateful for all of that and so much more. Now, therefore, the Folsom City Council and the citizens of this community do hereby commend and thank Carrie Howell for her legacy of leadership and outstanding and faithful service to the city of Folsom, and we convey our best wishes to you and your future endeavors. Declare this 12th day of December, 2022.
Thank you all. We are going to let Carrie speak and have the microphone, but we have a couple more things to read and convey, so if you want to have a seat and be comfortable. That was the official resolution, but I know many of us want to speak to the heart to Carrie. Speak from the heart to Carrie, I should say. Carrie, we obviously are going to miss your technical expertise and your institutional knowledge, but I think for everybody in this room, the thing that we most appreciate about you is that you never shied away from a difficult decision or a difficult vote. You did what had to be done, and we admire you and thank you for that. I was also asked to read this email that I was sent today. "Hi, Carrie. I asked Sarah to read this for me during the meeting tonight since I could not attend in person. As you know, we had the great opportunity to work together on the city council for the eight years I served. One of the things that is incredible to me is the number of years you have been willing to serve the city of Folsom and do everything you could to make our city a great place to live, work, and play. I believe you have served on the city council three times longer than I did. I know the level of effort required to serve on the city council, and I have great respect for your willingness to serve our community for such a long period of time. Here are some of the great things I remember about working with you. You were always willing to work on the hard things, like the affordable housing challenges, infrastructure opportunities such as sewer and water projects, and working to secure the funding we needed for the Folsom Lake Crossing. I am also very happy about the work we did together in the Historic District. The Historic District is a jewel within Folsom, and I know preserving and enhancing this area was of great importance to you. Thanks again for all you have done for the city, and this comes from a person that really knows how much you care. Wishing you all the best. Eric King, former member of the Folsom City Council, from 2000 to 2008."
I want to thank my current colleagues, past colleagues, I see some of you in the room, all of the employees that worked so hard for this city, and it has been my honor to serve all of you. Thank you.
could properly capture her many accomplishments and contributions on behalf of our city over three decades. I just wanted to again thank Carrie from the bottom of my heart for her tremendous service to all of us, to me personally, and to thousands of residents and businesses. Councilmembers Aquino and Kozlowski, congratulations. I know that you will continue to serve our residents at the highest level. Councilmember-elect Roarbaugh, congratulations and a very warm welcome. I am not only your city manager, but also a resident of your district. You ran a highly effective campaign, and I am confident you will be an equally effective and successful council member, and I look forward to working with you. By way of formal introduction to everyone here in the audience or out there watching or listening, Councilmember-elect Roarbaugh has called Folsom home since 2020. She previously lived in Washington State, where she served on the Macultio City Council from 2017 to 2020. Did I totally botch that, Anna? Sorry. And served as vice mayor in 2019. Councilmember-elect Roarbaugh represented the city of Macultio on the Poochett Sound Regional Council Economic Development Board and Snohomish County Tomorrow Steering Committee. She also served on the Snow Isle Library Foundation Board, the Snohomish County Economic Alliance, and on the Local Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors. Anna earned economics and political science degrees from the University of Washington. Anna's professional background is in business, including working with the John Maxwell team as a leadership trainer and coach. She has extensive experience coaching leaders and teaching transformational leadership. She has accomplished a speaker and has delivered a talk on the TEDx stage. Councilmember-elect Roarbaugh's family includes her husband Carter, who is here with her tonight, her son Harrison, who is also here tonight, who is completing his final year of college, congratulations, and her daughter Ella, who is in her first year of college, and congratulations to you, Ella, as well. The family enjoys walks on the trail with their dogs, Honolay and Ozzy. Again, welcome and congratulations, Anna. And I did want to acknowledge that county supervisor Sue Frost is here with us. Welcome, I would now like to invite Councilmembers-elect Aquino, Kozlowski, and Roarbaugh to gather in front of the audience to take the oath of office.
I can ask each raise your right hand and repeat after me. Hi, state your name.
Hi, Anna Farina.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of California.
And the Constitution of the state of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of California.
And the Constitution of the state of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without mental reservation.
Without mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter. I'd like to invite our council members to take this seat at the dais. Thank you.
We'll turn it over to you, Vice Mayor Rodriguez.
Will the clerk please call the next item?
Okay, thank you. Your next item this evening will be elections with which will include the selection of the mayor and the vice mayor for 2023. So I'm going to be handing down ballots to each of you. If I can have you mark your ballot, please, and then return it to me. And as the council members mark your ballot, just an overview of how we select the mayor and vice mayor in Folsom. The council members select among their own. They're filling out a ballot that we will then announce, and Deputy City Clerk Lydia Knopka will record Okay. So Councilmember Aquino votes for Rosario Rodriguez for mayor. Councilmember Kozlowski votes for Rosario Rodriguez for mayor. Councilmember Rodriguez votes for Rosario Rodriguez for mayor. Councilmember Roarbaugh votes for Rosario Rodriguez for mayor. And Councilmember Chalam Charla also votes for Rosario Rodriguez for mayor. So congratulations, Mayor Rodriguez. So we'll now move to the selection of vice mayor, and again, we're passing out ballots So Mayor Rodriguez votes for Councilmember Chalam Charla to serve as vice mayor. Councilmember Chalam Charla votes for Chalam Charla to serve as vice mayor. Councilmember Roarbaugh votes for Councilmember Chalam Charla to serve as vice mayor. Councilmember Kozlowski votes for Councilmember Chalam Charla to serve as vice mayor. And Councilmember Aquino votes for Chalam Charla to serve as vice mayor as well.
Thank you, colleagues.
Moving along, council... Oh, we do have one business from the floor.
Sorry, we did have one request to speak for Mr. Holderness. We don't have a business from the floor on this agenda, but would you still like to address the council, sir?
Mayor and vice mayor and council members, thank you for the indulgence. I actually filled out a form for the item number two, which was honoring Mayor Howell, and I had plans to give the longest speech of my life. Thanks, Carrie, for all your service. Thank you.
Council comments. Anna?
Just throw me to the wolves. I get a start. First, I want to acknowledge, I actually got a little choked up. Just honor the amount of years that Carrie has served, and it's hard to be the one that kind of unseats that, but, you know, just, I think, I just want that to be about her today. It should just be about her and the service. But I also want to acknowledge, personally, I thank everyone that supported me in this journey. It was not an easy task to take on. I give all the glory and grace to God. He put this in my heart to do, and I think he opened many of yours to the passion I have to serve and the love I have for the city in such a short amount of time. So I take this very, very seriously. My husband could attest. I've already gone through the entire packet, which I swear was the biggest packet, the entire year. And I guess I should say, I want to thank my husband for his continual support and my two children, who are just always supportive and loving and sarcastic and funny. So I really appreciate them. And I don't want it to go unnoticed that the city council, the Folsom City Council, just elected their first Latina mayor, woman mayor ever. As well as their first Asian vice mayor ever. So I'm very, very proud to be a part of this, especially for the next year, for the next four years. So we have a lot to do, and I thank you for your support. It's always really great when we're doing well and we're winning, but it's when mistakes are made or obstacles are in our face that we all need your support at that time even more. So, thank you.
Mayor, thank you. From the bottom of my heart, I just want to say one more time to Mayor Howell. She's still with us, and her vision and her views, and I'm definitely going to miss her closing comments for every meeting. Drive slowly. Stop sign is for everybody. I think I'm going to repeat that the entire 2023. I want to take, you know, make sure that Carrie Howell is here, because she has done wonderful things to this city, and all of you are the witness. Thank you once again, from my bottom of the heart, for Carrie Howell's service. And once again, to our new mayor, and of course, thank you, colleagues, Sarah, Mike, Mayor, and Anna, for trusting me, my abilities, and giving me the role of vice mayor. I'll be always besides and behind and next to Anna to support and take our city to the next level. Thank you once again, and I'm looking forward to working with all of you and with my colleagues as well. Lorraine, thank you. Elaine, I'm so sorry. Elaine, thank you, and it's a new team, and, you know, you learned, you have seen us, and it's no different. We are looking forward for the 2023, a better and bright year every year. Thank you.
Thank you, YK. Sarah?
Thank you. It has been my honor and pleasure to serve on the council for the past four years, and I'm grateful to have the opportunity to continue for another four. I want to welcome and congratulate Anna and congratulate Mike on his reelection, and also congratulate Rosario and YK on being our new mayor and vice mayor. This is a young council in terms of governing experience, but I think we have a lot of energy and enthusiasm. We have an incredible city staff, and I look forward to what we can accomplish together over the next few years. I want to thank my family and friends for their support. My husband, John, is in the audience tonight, along with our son Andrew and our friend Bianca, all of whom helped me walk a lot of precincts. My daughter Ellie and my mom weren't able to make it tonight, but they're here in spirit. And I will say, it's awfully nice to have kids who are able to vote for you. So, thank you to Ellie and Andrew for the Snapchat messages and the Instagram posts and all the, whatever medium they use these days to get out the vote with the younger crowd. I appreciate it. I'm always grateful for my dad, my late father, who set the example for me of what an elected official should be. I can't believe after 12 years, I still get choked up talking about this, but I do. And I always try to live up to the Dave Cox family motto, which is to do more than what But finally, and most of all, I want to thank the residents of Folsom for their continued trust and confidence in me. When we sit up here, our job is to make policy and to set a direction for the city, but it is the interaction with residents that I love the most about this job. And nothing underscores that better than a conversation I had about two weeks ago. I got a phone call from a Folsom resident who is 96 years old, and she was absolutely delightful and sharp as a tack. And she was calling to see if I had any knowledge of any organizations that could assist her 70-something-year-old daughter and son-in-law. And the son-in-law has Parkinson's and dementia, and his wife, this woman's daughter, is his only caretaker, and she is overwhelmed. And so I was able to connect them with some resources, and they were grateful. But I was grateful for the phone call because it inspired me. And after that call, I texted my son and daughter, and I said, even when I'm 96 years old, I'm going to be looking out for you. And I'm not sure they were, I thought it was as endearing as I did, but I loved that phone call. And I am looking forward to more phone calls and more conversations with residents over the next four years. So, thank you, Mayor.
Mike?
Not sure how to follow that exactly, but I would like to say one thing about Carrie. The lovely thing about that woman is that she always lets you know where she stood. And even if you weren't on the same side of something and had any kind of conflict, she remained the most loyal friend you could ever want to have. So in terms of just the quality of her character and her willingness to be straightforward and her, you know, kind of wearing her heart on her sleeve as it came to the things that she was passionate about, I will always have that, carry that around with me to, like, I'll do a little pun there. And I think it's, it will be all of our responsibility to share the end-of-council message about driving safely through Folsom, because we all, we all see it, and we all, at different times, probably do it. So please be careful as you drive on the streets. So that said aside, I'd like to also thank everybody that has helped me over the years learn about Folsom, the staff, Eileen, Elaine, and everybody else, the residents of the city who have asked, sometimes pointed, sometimes, you know, frivolous questions, all of which, like the example that you gave, Sarah, lead us to learn a little bit more about what resources are available and what kind of advice we can provide, what kind of assistance the city can provide, and, you know, helps us to formulate good policy for making changes or improving things here in the city. So I jokingly tell people all the time that a shocking number of people don't call me. So I'm going to put the challenge out to the whole city that may be paying attention. My cellphone is widely available. Please give me a call if you have some advice or a suggestion. I'm happy to take those calls. And then I will just land at the most important spot, and that's to thank my wife, Kim, who is here in the audience tonight, who, without her support and indulgence of my many hobbies, I wouldn't have the time to do this particular job, which I love to do for all of us. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
Again, I want to say congratulations, Sarah and Mike, and welcome, Anna. I do recognize that this is a very young council, and I'm referring to our ages. While we do have less than four years' experience, we are a very talented group of leaders. Sarah, when I look to you, you have some amazing analytical skills, and you have the ability to deep-dive into some of these issues. So when you speak, people listen, because they know that what you're talking about is truth. Mike, you have one of the most articulate abilities to be able to explain what goes on in the region, as we had talked about earlier. There are so many things happening, and you have such a very, you have an amazing ability to explain something very complex so that we can understand it who are not in the day-to-day. So I think we will turn to you when it comes to these regional boards to get some of the knowledge transfer to us. YK, people trust you. And that gives our council a great responsibility to live up to the highest level of integrity. And Anna, if you work the way you campaigned, then your drive and energy to execute is, will be a compliment to this council as we take execution to another level. I do have a bit of a different form of leadership. For me, right now, some of the big ones are transparency and accountability, and that starts with me. I'm not going to wait around and ask and wait till you guys come bring I'm not going to wait around and ask and wait till you guys come bring issues to me. I want to come to you. I want to have a list of issues that we can punch out for the next year and keep some of these high-priority items sort of on the, you know, set for the next few months, because ultimately, this is our agenda. It's not my agenda. I said it with our, with our city manager, but ultimately, this is our agenda. I have a commitment to our residents to keep Folsom a great place to live, play, and run a business. Connecting with our local business is high on my radar. Giving our residents the opportunity to engage is also very important. My wish list is that we would have a City of Folsom Tax Payers Association to ensure accountability of public funds. We also have a ton of opportunities this next year as we look at economic development. I always think of, I'm a visionary person, so imagine Folsom being a part of a 75-mile Class 1 bike trail. Imagine Folsom being a part of the longest bike trail in California and the nation. Imagine providing riders the perfect weekend package with a hotel stay, supporting our local eateries, shopping in the area, and riding through pristine trails through some of California's most formative history. The barrier to this, of course, is the route between White Rock Road and the town of El Dorado Hills. I would ride it on an e-bike, of course. But then I think of the Johnny Cash Trail. We know that funding is a barrier, so maybe now is the time to take a look at private-public partnership. Other cities have made things like this happen, and so we can too. What about water tourism? Lake Nataoma offers an incredible opportunity for fun, but access is limiting. Enough talk of the River District. For the past four years that I have been very engaged, we have talked and talked and talked about the River District. It is now time to do something and move forward with it. How about identifying additional revenue resources as a priority? I know we've talked about the Airbnb TOT, but there are so many great opportunities for us right now. And then, how many more years are we going to talk about the Corp Yard Plan? This is another one that I've heard over and over, and it just doesn't seem to move. So lastly, today I do want to, it is a very meaningful day to me. Two years ago, very organically, the residents of Folsom elected the first Latina and the first Asian to the city council, and it is an honor to sit up here today and be the first Latina vice mayor and the first, sitting next to the first Asian Latino. I am very grateful to be a part of this, and I will work very hard for you all. And with that said, I will adjourn the meeting at 6:02, and we will be back here tomorrow at 6:30. Woo-hoo! (applause)